I would like for all to consider standing for an invocation if you're able and willing. And if you would, please remain standing for the pledge of the flag. Just pray. Lloyd, as we gather today at this meeting, we ask that you will be in our midst. Help us make decisions that will be pleasing to you. Help us to be able to discuss matters at hand in a reasonable way and to be willing to give up having our own way. God let this meeting be productive and as should be the case in all areas of our life. Help us to keep you at the forefront of our minds as we do the work set forth. Amen. Our president.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just.
For all. I'm sure at nine o'clock with the regular Henry County Board of Commissioners, meeting nine AM Tuesday, April the 2nd, 2013, come to order. Do we have anybody that would approve the agenda as published or with amendments? Nobody moving it? Have a motion by District Three? Have a second by District Two? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Would like to have a proclamation for Crime Victims Rights Week, and our presenter would be Ms. Julie Ernst.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The proclamation is in recognition of National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 21st through 27th, 2013. Whereas 18.7 million Americans are directly harmed by crime each year, and each crime in turn affects many more family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, often leaving a lasting physical, emotional, or financial impact on people of all ages and abilities and of all economic, racial, and social backgrounds. And whereas in 1982, the President's task force on victims of crime envisioned a national commitment to a more equitable and supportive response to victims. And whereas the nation heeded this call to action and promoted victims' rights initiatives, effective and compassionate victim services, and just compensation and financial support. And whereas today, thousands of victim assistance programs provide help and support to child victims of violence and sexual abuse, stalking victims, survivors of homicide victims, victims of drunk-driving crashes, victims of domestic violence, victims of property and identity theft, and other crimes. And whereas now is the time to embrace new solutions that involve new partnerships with underserved communities and a greater emphasis on learning what works in meeting victims' needs. And whereas the U.S. Department of Justice calls for a renewed commitment to serving all victims of crime in the 21st century, and National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 21st through 27th, 2013, provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy, creativity, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas the Henry County District Attorney and Solicitor's Offices are joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice agencies, and concerned citizens throughout Henry County and America to raise awareness of victims' rights and observe National Crime Victims Rights Week. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, that April 21st through 27th, 2013, be known as National Crime Victims Rights Week in Henry County, during which time we reaffirm Henry County's commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights and address their needs this week and throughout the year. Express our appreciation for all those who provide support for victims of crime, and honor those victims and crime survivors who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve our response to victims of crime and build a more just community, this second day of April, 2013, by the Henry County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation to the Henry County Police Department.
Morning, Chief.
Thank you very much.
How do you do? Appreciate it. I'd like to take this opportunity as a citizen of Henry County, not as a board member, but as a citizen of Henry County. Very seldom do I do these things in public, but I'm doing this for a reason. There's a lot of businesses in Henry County that I do business with. And I'm presenting the check this morning to Henry County Police Department on my personal account of $1,000 to go towards the Elgin Daniel Fund or Family Fund in order for them to go in May to Washington. I'd like to see other businesses, especially those that I've done business with, and continue to step up to the plate. I know churches are doing it, and my home church has done it, and I think they'll be doing something tomorrow morning. I'd like to present this to the Chief. I took my badge off because I'm not, I'm doing it as a citizen and a business owner and not as a board member.
Thank you very much. Thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we have a request for waivers, Mr. Bob Lynch.
Mr. Chair, can I just have one second? I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
We'll try and, I know that we need to move on, but what I would like to actually bring forward is that next May, May 12th through the 17th, is National Police Week up in Washington, D.C. And that's when any officer or deputy that has lost their life in the line of duty will be honored. Their name is put on the wall in Washington, D.C. I have been there. It's quite a moving experience. But last November, we lost Officer Elgin Daniel. He was struck and killed by a hit-and-run driver. And Elgin's name will be placed on that wall in May. Normally, the protocol is that the agency that that individual worked for will come together, get donations, and escort that family to Washington, D.C. And that's what we're going to do. I want to thank Georgia's Wounded Heroes. Mr. Nate Watson is here today, and he's going to speak a minute on what Georgia's Wounded Heroes has done to help us get the money to get Officer Daniel's family up to Washington, D.C., and several of our officers that will be escorting them. I also want to point out that Lieutenant Vance Rosen over my left shoulder and newly-married Lieutenant Winsell on my right shoulder have done an outstanding job coordinating this with Georgia's Wounded Heroes and organizing this, because it's going to take approximately $10,000 to get the family to Washington, D.C. and our officers, because Washington, D.C. is quite expensive. But I appreciate Commissioner Bowman putting into this fund. We also have several local churches that have held special offerings. And from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate everything everybody has done. And I'll close by saying, we're still taking donations. So Nate, if you want to just speak a moment on what your organization is doing, and Brian Breakfield, a local State Farm agent, is the individual that has started this foundation. And my hat's off to Brian, because he does a great deal for the community.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, first of all. Commissioner Bowman, thanks for your generous donation. In August 2009, I was wounded in northern Afghanistan. For my actions, I received a Purple Heart and a Bronze Star of Valor. Prior to that time, I was a police officer in the state of Georgia. In May of 2012, I was contacted by State Farm Agent Brian Breakfield from Hampton, Georgia. And initially, I was going to do a speaking engagement, a one-time thing, and walk away. I've done numerous charity fundraisers. Well, after that one time that I talked to Brian, his enthusiasm was so much that I couldn't just walk away. I feel like even though I'm not from here, Henry County and Clayton County have actually taken me in as actually a citizen, even though I'm not from here. Georgia's Wounded Heroes was started to help wounded soldiers, firefighters, and police officers in the state of Georgia. All of our money stays in the state of Georgia. As an extension of Georgia's Wounded Heroes, we started the Fallen Fund, which will help Officer Elgin Daniel's family go to Washington, D.C. for Police Week. And we hope in the future, actually, we hope we never have to use this again, but if another public safety officer dies in Henry County, we will also help them to go to Police Week. So thank you again for your donation, and thanks for your time.
Yes, sir. Can you state the information where people can send their donations?
Yes, we have, right now, we have a website. It's called georgiaswoundedheroes.org, but it's under construction. You can go to our Facebook page, which is just Georgia's Wounded Heroes on Facebook. And if you will send the admin a message, or you can send an email to me. My email address is nate, N-A-T-E, at georgiaswoundedheroes.org. And we'll contact, we'll get back in touch with you as to how you can donate to us. But we are, we're dedicated to keeping all money in the state of Georgia. It's not like giving to a national organization. All of our money stays here.
But if a certain individual wants to donate specifically to Officer Daniel's family?
They can earmark it for the Fallen Fund, and that will go directly to Officer Elgin Daniel's family. And the money that's left over will just go, will stay in the fund to help future fallen officers' families.
Thank you.
And just to make.
But also, there's a fundraiser on April 19th out at Eaglesbrook Country Club. There's a golf tournament that you guys are doing as well.
Yes, sir. We have several, we have several events coming up. We have that on the 19th. And also, we have, in September, we'll have Heroes Weekend, which is going to be, it's going to be in Hampton again this year. So that will all raise money for Georgia's Wounded Heroes.
Yeah, so anybody who's interested in obviously getting involved with the fundraising, you know, there's a lot of fun things that they're doing also to try to raise funds for this good organization, you know, reach out to Brian Breakfield or Nate. It sounds like, you know, money good use. Appreciate your help.
Yes, sir. Like I said, we'll keep all the money here, and it all goes to the injured firefighters, police officers, and soldiers in the state of Georgia.
Who is your email?
Nate, N-A-T-E, at georgiaswoundedheroes.org.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd also like to just thank each and every one of you, all your hard work.
Anybody else have any comment? Next, we have a request for waivers of late interest and/or penalties. Date of request was 3/15/2013. The map code is 140 Bravo 06059004. Tax year is 2012. Taxpayer Lori Patrick. Reason for request: Did not pay. Father Bob Lynch holds mortgage on the house and wasn't aware of the bill. Reason for denial of the tax commissioner: He's indicated that no error on the tax commissioner's office correct addresses multiple notices, and owner owned the property since 2007, late in 2011. We'd like to recognize Mr. Bob Lynch, if you'd like to present your case at this moment.
Thank you, and good morning, gentlemen. I understand this is the appropriate tribunal that I am to appear before to make this appeal for a waiver or penalties on this tax lien that's been placed here. My interest in this is the fact that I am the note holder here. I was unaware of this until the date that it was appealed. I became aware of it when there were several payments missed, and it occurred to me that I should determine whether the taxes had been paid. And at that time, I learned the lien had been placed on the property of Scott and Lori Patrick. So that is essentially what I am appealing here today.
Any Commissioner have any comments?
The only question I have is that I noticed in the notes, it said that it was also late in 2011, and this is the 2012.
Late in 2011? I beg your pardon, sir.
It says, it's late, in the notes, it says, owned the property since 2007, late in 2011. And then this is the 2012 property tax statement, too. So is this the second year that it's been late?
This was the only year that a lien had been placed, to my knowledge. My interest, of course, is I'm going to wind up paying this. I'm unaware of a lien being placed in 2011. It did not come to my attention as the note holder.
Anybody have any more comments or move in either direction? We can move to deny it or approve a waiver?
What district is it?
Sir?
What district is it in?
This is in District Three, correct?
I don't know what district it's in.
In this Lakedale area?
I don't think it matters.
What, whose district it's in?
I don't think it matters. It's a county-wide thing. Okay, to start something, I move that we deny the request. Okay, motion dies for lack of second, so we've done nothing.
So that, in fact, does deny the request?
I'm telling you that, in fact, that would deny the request.
Thanks for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Next, we have the resolution request to board appoint a nominating committee for the Board of Elections and presenter Janet Shillnut.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In 2006, Senate Bill 278 passed the General Assembly, combining the Election Board and the Registrar's Board. Now, I'm not crazy about all the language in that bill either. Our local attorney did not draw this legislation up. It was actually written at the Capitol by Legislative Council there. But it does ask that the fifth appointment to our election board be made by a committee from, appointed from the Board of Commissioners, the fifth member. The other four members, two are from the Republican Party and two from the Democratic Party. So I'm requesting today some appointments for this committee to get together and come up with a name to come back to you as the appointment, the fifth appointment.
What I would like to recommend between now and May the 16th at our 6:30 meeting, that this board submit names to the county clerk. And however many names there would be, this board at our next regular meeting will select three to be the nominating committee. And we have to, not May the 16th, April, April the 16th. Okay, what did I say, May? This has to be done by?
I'd rather it be done in April.
No, what I'm saying, I saw May.
The process to get them.
Okay, May the 7th.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay. So if the board, okay, we have comments?
The only thing I also got to ask is just for additional information for the other Commissioners, Janet, can you list, you know, send us all an email or send an email to Shay or Marilyn so that we can see who's already on the committee?
Right.
And then also which districts they're from?
Okay.
Because I think that that would also shed some light on maybe where there's some areas that are underrepresented that maybe we could work on with this appointment as well.
Well, I can get with Shay, and we can, you're talking about the other appointments now or the?
Yeah, who's on the Elections Board currently, just because you're asking for our input, maybe there's something we can help out with on that.
Well, this particular year, we have three appointments that will be coming up.
Right.
One from the Republican, one from the Democrat, and then one.
That won't affect us. Only one affects us is the one.
And I'll get together with Shay and, you know, and get that information for you. In the resolution, or I mean, the legislation, it does not say how the committee is comprised. It doesn't say how many members. We had three slots, but it could be five. You know what I'm saying? It's no directions on how you put the committee together. It just asks.
Are you saying we can have, even though we have three slots here, we could put six on a committee?
You can put, it doesn't say, it doesn't say in the legislation how you form the committee. So each one of you could have.
Is somebody moving in a direction that we?
Janet, for the record, can you just describe the responsibilities of the Board of Elections?
Okay. And this is something, you know, a lot of people thinks this is a very prestigious appointment. And, you know, it is very interesting that normally, the first year, you don't hear them speak, because there's an awful lot to learn while you're on that board. Sometimes you have to make decisions that aren't fun to make, as far as a hearing or things like that. But we try to ask that the appointments be as non-political as possible, because there has been times where one of our local appointees to the Board of Elections had to go before the state election board. And it's not fun. And they also are in very much defining mode nowadays. So we ask that it be as non-political as possible. If you're planning on running for office or being somebody's campaign manager or whatever, that might not be the best person to put on that as an appointment, okay? Because I spend half my time trying to keep up with, you know, trying to keep them as non-political as possible, okay?
I don't think we mentioned this, but this is the slot that is now being held by Mr. Arch Brown.
Mr. Arch Brown.
I got you.
Yes, he's been an excellent fifth member and a nonpartisan, you know, appointee. I wouldn't even know what party, because I mean, and there's one thing that people don't realize, we have a monthly meeting. Sometimes we have some call meetings, and on Election Day, they always are around on Election Day. But once we go into our meetings and close that door, party is not involved. We make decisions that are best for the Henry County voters, and parties are not brought out. So, you know, as far as this appointment, we do ask for it to be as non-political as possible. Makes my job a little bit easier.
One thing I don't understand, I don't understand how you can be non-political and find yourself on the board for the Board of Elections. So that's a concern for me.
Well, you know, I think as Commissioners, every one of y'all are elected to position. Politics is in your life every day, in one manner or another, probably. The normal citizens out in Henry County aren't that political. Yes, y'all go to your Republican or your Democratic meetings, but there's a lot of independent parties going on now, Tea Parties, Green Party, whatever. But there's an awful lot of citizens that you would not know whether they're Republican or Democrat. And we're just looking for somebody that would not bring politics to the table, because the decisions that we make are tough ones sometimes.
With the appointment of this committee, how do we ensure that the process is fair?
Well, I, you know, between the, already having two appointments by the Republican Party and two appointments by the Democratic Party, this third member, you know, I think it was kind of, we talked earlier about whether it was Republican or Democrat. And once again, we don't bring that into, you know, an issue. I have seen it come up on Election Day, but it was not within my board, you know. I don't guess there's any reassurance that I can give you 100%, but I think if every one of them know me, that I play fair and I don't break that law. I don't sway toward the Democratic or the Republican. I go straight by the book, and so do my board members. And one of my jobs is to direct that board and give them, to the best of my ability, the knowledge that I have from the past.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, sir.
I'm in my seventh year. You've done a terrific job, as far as I can see. And I've been to the elections, I've been down there when the counts were coming in. I think you've done a terrific job.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the job that you do.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Somebody moving in a direction that we give names to the clerk and ask her to submit them by the April the 16th meeting?
Move.
We have a motion from District One.
I'll say.
We have a second from District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Let the record indicate, it's five and one. The Commissioner from District Five is opposed. Thank you so much. Next, we have a resolution request approval of a contact to add wireless contract to add a wireless access to the transit buses, security cameras. Mr. Williams, good morning.
Good morning. 2010, the Board approved purchase of a bus security system, camera system, to be placed on our buses. And in 2010, we were able to install four cameras on the bus that record things going on outside, things going on on the inside of the bus. And personally, I think this has been one of the best purchases that we've ever made. It helps us verify accidents. Police Department has used our recordings for accidents that they've been involved in and been able to just observe and verify or dispute things that people may have said taking place on the bus. This is a companion product that we're asking for. It's a mobile surveillance system that will provide wireless download of the cameras immediately on site. And it would just improve greatly what we're able to do. The total cost is $31,145. The local match is 20%. That's $622.9. And the federal part will be $24,916. Request approval.
Anybody have any comments? Somebody moving in that direction?
I'm moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve the resolution. Do we have any from District Two? We have a second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed? No? So move. Five and, correction, six and zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, we have presentations of multiple items. It appears that y'all go in the same place on a different car. Resolution request authorization to use asset, 420 seized funds for the following items. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yes, the police department would like to use seized funds to buy 12 new vehicles. They'd be used to replace existing vehicles with high mileage, and they're in constant need of repair. We plan to use the state contract, the purchase from Akins Ford and Dodge dealership. The cost per vehicle will be $22,813.45.
Let me ask you a question.
Okay.
What happens with the Crown vehicle?
I personally love them and miss them, and they're not making them anymore, sir.
I know, that's why. That's one of the most reliable, I think, police vehicles that have ever been made.
I would agree with you.
But I know Dodge has come a long way since they first come out with it, what, in tripid?
Well, just the Chargers itself, since they first come out, there was a lot of problems with them, but they've been out for quite some time now. So they definitely have done well with improvements. I believe State Patrol was the first one to get them. There's a lot of brake problems, but they've been out for a long time now, and they work well. Just to note that we're only getting six-cylinder ones, they'd be better on gas. They'd be better on gas. Hopefully, it'll be safer for officers.
Thank you. Somebody move to approve the resolution as published?
I'm moved to approve.
Have a motion from District Two to approve. Have a second.
I'm moved to approve.
What I missed.
If you're wondering what I'm giggling about is if you notice on there, it says not Hemi.
I would like for the chief to have a Hemi. I like the way that, I almost asked a question.
How about the major, too?
They put it in nice big print on mine. They're not Hemi's.
They're not Hemi's.
Some would not understand what that was, but I, a couple of years ago, when I was reading, I'm gonna have to say that my white hair stepped in because it clearly stated they were not Hemi's, and I was making a big deal of why did we need Hemi's? Well, they weren't Hemi's to start with, so I think I had to apologize to Rod maybe a half a dozen times. Probably wouldn't have done it quite as many times as he wasn't quite as big as he is. I felt like at the time I could probably outrun him though, so, but anyway, no, I appreciate that. Mr. Preston, thank you for that note.
I don't know, I just, it was humorous.
We need, we need a little humor from time to time, so anyway, thank you, sir.
Just a clarification that I think that the motion was made by District Two, and I think it was seconded by District Five. Any further discussion or comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, raise your right hand. I'm showing six and zero.
All right, the next item is going to be for the markings. We plan to mark them currently how the cars are marked now. The police department took three bids, Extreme Graphics, Firehouse Graphics, and Sonorama. Firehouse Graphics was the lowest bid. To get all 12 cars done, it's gonna cost $4,920.
Somebody move to accept this?
I'm moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve the resolution as published from District Four. We have a second.
Second.
District One. District One, raise your hand in the absence of voice. Is any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We're six and zero.
Okay, the next item is for the police equipment, the lights, sirens, those type of items that go inside the police cars so they can be utilized. We plan to utilize the Henry County contract that was approved on March 5, 2013. The purchase of equipment, the cost for each car will be $4,331.51, totaling $51,978.12.
Somebody move to approve this motion? I mean, correction, this resolution is published? We have a motion from District Five to approve. Have a second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, say a, raise your right hand. I'm showing six and zero, Clark.
Okay, the next item is for the Digital Ally. This is our camera system inside our cars. We put down this as a sole source because we already have 120 of these systems in place. So our software is hooked up to this. The courts can actually tap into this and view it when they need the videos. Anybody in the command staff can look at it and see it. So to get 12 different ones from another source would pretty much screw up the whole system. It wouldn't interlink to the software system. So we're requesting to use, continue to use the Digital Ally. The price per camera is $4,295, totaling $51,900.
Somebody move to approve the resolution as published?
All moved to approve.
We have, the Chair determines that the motion came from District Three before District Four. So we have a motion from District Three. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. I'm showing six and zero, Madam Clerk.
Okay, this last item is for the police radios that are in the cars. We're actually gonna be able to save 12 radios from the older cars. That's about the only thing that's still good on them. We did bid out, did get four quotes from Transcom, Law Enforcement Supply, Loudon, West Tattletown. Only two answered back, giving us quotes to remove the old radios and put them in the new ones. And Loudon was the lowest bid on that one, and it's gonna cost a total of $6,660 to have the radio switched over. But radios are about $4,000 each, so we saved quite a bit of money using our old ones.
Somebody move to accept the resolution as published? Have a motion from District One. Do I hear a second? Have a motion from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Just for record, since the clerk has stepped out, okay, the county attorney has recorded it. Thank you so much. Six and zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution request award of a bid for Pest Control Services. Rod Gray.
Thank you, good morning. This morning, I have a request to award an annual contract for Pest Control Services for the various Henry County facilities. The recommendation is to award this bid to the low quote from Inspector's Pest Control as a unit price contract with no fixed quantities for one year with two mutually agreed upon annual extensions. Prices will remain firm for the term of the contract.
Does someone move to accept the resolution as published?
Moved to approve.
Have a motion to approve the resolution as published from District Two. Do I hear a second? Have a second from District Five. Any further discussion?
Rod, is this an item that could actually be done in-house in the future?
I would have to consult with facility maintenance on that. It's, I'm not sure how you would store the chemicals or what it would cost to buy the chemicals. In my experience with government, it's typically a contract that is bid out as an annual contract because they come after, a lot of times, people in these facilities have some concerns about the fumes of the scent, so a lot of times, they come after hours, they come at odd times, they work with our schedule. So whether it could be, I'm not sure, but it is typically not.
Do we have funds available to carry this forward? Okay, funds are available, been budgeted and available. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Six and zero. Thank you so much. Next, we have a planning zoning discussion regarding proposed amendments to the CDBG. At the last meeting, we had some discussion as to how it was gonna distribute $45,000 from one entity that couldn't comply and $5,000 from an entity that couldn't comply.
That's right.
So the Board asks that planning zoning services go back and with a different proposal to this Board, and this is what it's about, to the Board, either consider giving a $50,000 to one entity or splitting it and giving it to other entities. So I turn the floor over to Michael Harry.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. As noted, Staff went back after the last Board of Commissioners meeting and reassessed the, a couple of things. You know, first, it was, as we were informed, that we were not gonna utilize the Wendy Hill facility, so we, we took the connecting Henry allocation off because there's been no other facility identified by that organization. So we addressed that. And then after that, we had some comments made regarding the McIntosh Trail Early Childhood Development Center. So what Staff has done since that time is we've met with representatives from McIntosh Trail to find out from them if it was a feasible idea for them to come in and utilize what was discussed at the time, the Stockbridge Multiplex Complex, and use that facility for their early childhood development area. We met with them and we've, and they've made several attempts to reach out and meet with the city of Stockbridge, and as of this morning, there's been no meeting as of yet to work on any particular details regarding an arrangement or agreement between McIntosh Trail and city of Stockbridge to utilize that particular facility. We have met with them and discussed other potential options as far as locations, and we're, you know, we're in the midst of those conversations, and we've been talking over the course of the last few days. And I think in the handout, kind of gave a detailed description of some of the main points that were raised during our meeting with the McIntosh Trail staff.
When the city of Stockbridge acquired that new property, initially, I thought it was a great investment because they were gonna use that property to, to help out nonprofit organizations, and I thought they were committed to, to early childhood education and also McIntosh Trail. Is there any reason why they didn't, why they chose not to move forward with that meeting?
I do not know. We reached out to them on a couple of occasions trying to facilitate, to help facilitate a meeting, and I know, and Ms. Elaine Brown from McIntosh Trail is here. The Board would like to speak with her directly. I know she's had some conversations with officials at city of Stockbridge, but for whatever reason, they were not able to facilitate a meeting. I don't know the exact details.
Because there was a meeting scheduled for last Wednesday, I think.
I believe so.
So what happened there?
Ms. Prometbeau is speak a little bit more specifically on it. We, from our staff standpoint, we were available, and our understanding was that the city of Stockbridge officials were not available to meet at that time. Going on, we, subsequent, following that, the March 19 meeting, we also received a request from District Two Commissioner regarding consideration for the utilization of the same $50,000 allocation for a project involving renovation of the Old Fortson Library. Staff subsequently also reached out with, to the city manager of Hampton to discuss the potential of this, of this proposed project being able to utilize funds. And as noted in the, again, noted a few points that were raised in our conversation with the city manager. They're asking that the majority of funds, if received, would be used to expand their parking area. The city of Hampton would consider assisting with the cost to staff the facility. The property is currently owned by the library board, however, the city is in talks with the library board to reacquire. And right now, they do not have a current set budget for their estimated total cost for the renovations and equipment needs they may have. However, in researching it with Staff, Shannon discovered that the location of the Old Fortson Library is within a low to mod, identified low to mod income area, so that would lead itself to be able to be a potential for an eligible facility to be able to serve and receive CDBG funds. As of March 25, as far as we knew, the ownership issue was still outstanding, had not been reserved, so, had resolved, rather, so we had not, we do not have a firm commitment from the city at this time, principally based on the ownership, ownership constraints. What we've discussed is that if neither program was, if either program is not ready at this time, but felt they could be ready perhaps in the next 30 days, we are required and bound by our HUD regulations to have a 30-day public, public comment period. So if either one of the organizations felt that they were, there's a possibility that they could perhaps have the, have their program in a position to be able to receive the funding, then we would recommend moving forward with doing the 30-day public notification period and then come back and let both present their proposals to the Board. If not, if they did not feel that they were in a position to be able to present that, then Staff would certainly recommend that we utilize that $50,000 and roll it into the next year's allocation. We would not be losing that money, but rather just roll that into the next application. We've actually, Shannon's already begun the application process for the next year. So in essence, we would have, if we were to get the same allocation again next year, rather than 850, we'd have $900,000 to be able to allocate toward the, worth of CDBG funds. Again, that would be the Staff's recommendation.
Let me ask this.
Yes, sir.
We've got $50,000.
Yes, sir.
We've got two potential projects. In the event both of them work out some details in 30 days and they come back, we can realistically give both of them $25,000 apiece. Is that?
That's correct.
Would that be a fair statement?
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any?
Are we gonna allow the two to speak or not?
Well, what I'd like to do is for somebody to consider making a motion to allow comments from the floor, not to exceed five minutes per person. So if somebody would move.
I can tell you, I'm gonna make that motion.
We have a motion from District Two to open the floor up to a general discussion. Have a second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we will hear discussions now from the public who would like to make comments, and I think the one that made the comments going to the back of the room.
Well, I know there's representatives, there's representative here from the city of Hampton as well as from McIntosh Trail.
Okay.
Have any specific questions concerning there?
Why don't we, you wanna hear the McIntosh Trail first? Does somebody want to be heard from the McIntosh Trail?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Elaine Brown. I am the Program Director of McIntosh Trail, excuse me, Early Childhood Development Council. Our central office is in Jackson in Butts County, and we serve seven counties. We provide early childhood education and comprehensive services to almost 1,000 children and their families within that seven county service area. We were incorporated in 1981. We have a Board of Directors, and we, many of our, most of our centers are licensed through the Department of Early Care and Learning. We also have several centers that are certified, NACI Centers, which is the National Education Accreditation System. We are a program of excellence, and this is a national award that's given out to about 25 programs throughout the nation, and we're only, we're one of three programs here in the state of Georgia. That is a program of excellence. I'd like to thank you for your interest in early childhood education. We all know how important early childhood education is. We have tried for many years to expand our services into other parts of Henry County, but we've not been able to do so because of being able to find a location that was affordable and also appropriate for the type of services that we provide. I'm here to answer any questions. I don't know what type of questions you might have for me, but I'm here to answer them if I can.
Did y'all receive any additional money? Because I noticed McIntosh Trail showed up in two places on the original funding for this grant, the community block grant. Did y'all already receive any funds whatsoever?
We've never received funds from Henry County.
Okay.
No. We have, in the past, we have, right now, we have a building in Pike County that we're in that we bought, built in collaboration with Pike County that services our center in Pike County. We are a nonprofit agency, single purpose, and we are very familiar with the grant process and the requirements that come along with all sorts of grants.
I have a question. There was a meeting scheduled last week, and I assume that meeting was gonna take place. Can you talk about what happened, what they tried to reschedule the meeting? This is kind of concerning for me because I've never seen anybody do business this way. So if you can explain what happened, why that meeting didn't take place when the city of Stockbridge knew that we needed their commitment in order to move forward with this, can you talk about that for a second? What happened with the meeting?
Okay, we originally had an appointment set up, I think it was Wednesday afternoon at 4:00, and we canceled it with the, I can't remember if it was the city manager, who it was we were supposed to see. We canceled it because of the lateness of the time and with the understanding that we would try to reschedule it on Thursday. My executive director and I tried to make contact several times to set up an appointment, and we were not able to, to tour the building just to see, you know, if it was a facility that would be appropriate that we could go in with some renovation money and be able to provide services. We talked with the mayor, I think it was Friday morning, and he discussed some of his concerns and said that he would try to get back with us that day to set up an appointment, maybe that day or Monday, and we have not been able to.
What were those concerns?
That, his understanding that the monies would go to the city of Stockbridge and that he was not sure if they were, at that point, ready to be able to do something with it for us.
So we possibly could end up with the same situation with the Boys and Girls Club?
Maybe.
Because that's the same argument.
I'm not sure of what exactly happened with them, but possibly.
Communication breakdown and the inability to have a meeting. In the next 30 days? in the next 30 days, how effective could we be in, in trying to put this money to use? Is that, do you see that as being a limita- um, cause I think your organization does great work, but I'm just, with this grant money, we have time certain limitations, and I wanna make sure we don't get caught in, in a situation. So could y'all implement and execute this money in the, in 30 days, or?
Um, we, um, have talked about some other possible locations within the county, and, uh, what we will do is to try to move forward is look at the feasibility of those locations and see if it's something that we can go in and do some renovations in to be able to, uh, serve children. So we're still, you know, we're still ready and willing to move forward.
But you don't have any specifics currently, it sounds like?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Would anybody else like to be heard at this time?
Thank you.
If you wish, take your name and, um, who you represent and address.
Good morning, I'm Andy Pippen, City Manager of Hampton. Um, appreciate the opportunity to speak on this topic. Um, the city, I want to clarify a couple of things as far as the, the, the library. I met with the library board last night. Um, they are, they voted in favor of not negotiating with any other potential purchaser or renter of that building until we finalize something. Um, the city is not really interested in leasing that building. We want to own that building, um, and we are going to move forward in doing so. I met with, um, as most of you know, um, Ron Burkalter with SPOST, um, engineer with SPOST, project manager. I met with Commissioner Preston, um, members of senior services, many of your, uh, members of the arts community, members of, um, our city council, members of the, uh, the Henry County Community Gardens, brought everybody together at the facility. Uh, everyone agrees it would be a fantastic facility. We have it nailed down, uh, the location. Um, just so you all are aware, um, the, the, the reason the city and all the cities are participating in this CDBG program with the county is a few years ago, um, when we learned that we were a county of entitlement, uh, Butch Sanders, the county manager at the time, called myself and the other city managers together and proposed that we all participate with the county in this program. That meant that we would be entitled to some of this funding. We wouldn't have to fight other cities around the state. The downside of that is by participating with the county, uh, uh, we are unable to go after CDBG funding on our own, um, until the term of this, this program is over, which as you know, is at least, what, three or four, four more years or so. Um, we, uh, have not been awarded anything through the program. We would greatly appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to, uh, get some money out of the CDBG program this fiscal year. We are moving very quickly on this project, uh, to, to own, uh, and rehabilitate the Old Fortson Library, which is a monument in Hampton, um, most of which donated by Mr. Ed Fortson. Um, primarily, well, not primarily, 100% of these funds, I believe, would be used to, th- th- this project won't work unless we own the property next door, and it needs paved parking. Um, we have to, uh, I've, I've checked with Michael Harris, and, uh, that is an approved, uh, approvable use of the funds, uh, to actually install parking to be used for this facility. Um, that's what the funds would go to. Rough estimate, without curb and gutter, and without even having engineers, about $32,000. Uh, if we curb and gutter it because we're adding the impervious surface, uh, and we get it actually engineered, we're going to be at the $50,000 mark, no doubt, uh, on, and, and that's not even a purchase of property either. So, City of Hampton is going to, uh, make a financial, uh, contribution to this project just in parking alone, and this would certainly help us move a step forward. We're also willing to help with staffing. Uh, I believe you know, you all know, we can, we, we, we want to use this for a community center, uh, primarily for use by our seniors. Uh, the city is willing to, uh, help with the staffing and operations of that, willing to work with, hopefully with the SPOST group to, um, rehabilitate the rest of the building. And, um, as you all know, that'd be several, several birds killed with one stone. Peter, don't come after me for that comment. Any questions for, for us? And we're, I mean, we're, we're, we're meeting, we have our meeting tonight, and I fully expect the city council to authorize me to spend up to a certain amount, uh, of money on this overall project. We're, we're ready to go.
Anybody have any questions?
The one thing I just kind of wanna bring, um, to light, something, when we had these community block grant discussions in the past, and rightfully so, I mean, economic times have been tough for the county. I mean, our tax digest has dropped substantially, and, um, part of the reason, this was originally budgeted, of this community block grant, 250,000 was going to go to District Two for Senior Center West, um, because it was, it's been part of several SPOSTs. And one of the issues, and rightfully so, brought up, was the, the funding of the day-to-day operations, because that's the problem. We can give buildings, but it, man, the general budget is tough on us to keep the staff there, and you guys have stepped up, that y'all would be willing to look at volunteers as well as part-time help. Um, the City of Hampton's willing to kind of make that happen, to take that burden off of us to, to help make this happen. Is that, is that the case?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we have a great volunteer base in, in Hampton, uh, per capita, I would say it's number one in the county. Um, we, uh, would also look at funding, you know, we would have to start with part-time employment for obvious reasons. Uh, once we gauge participation in all the programs that would be offered there, we would have to work with senior services, cause I, I don't know what seniors do. Um, so I, I, I would not be a real good director of senior activities, um, at this facility. Uh, so we would, we would definitely have to work with that organization. We've got, I've got needs assessments coming in from them and other organizations on what they would need, uh, uh, to use their building for, for what they use buildings for. Um, uh, absolutely, work with, uh, work with the county, work with all of these organizations to help staff. Um, the utilities are through the city. I'm sure I can give us a break, um, on that building as far as electric rates, water sewer. Um, again, th- this thing is, is, it, it seems like a win times 14, um, to me, uh, and for the citizens of District Two and the City of Hampton. Uh, and, and again, we're, we're, we're ready to go.
And another thing I thought was interesting, we had that meeting, and one of the, the big players that was there that was extremely excited about it was on the arts side of things. Um, there's a summer camp that's run by Ms. Schmidt, Mrs. Schmidt, um, probably slaughtering, but you, you, she was talking about using that, cause they have so much, such a hard time getting the performing arts center for their summer camps. They do a summer camp for, for children, and she was very excited because there's a chance for that to overlap, so this truly could be a, a community center.
Absolutely. They're coming to our council meeting tonight. Um, the, uh, they have met with Ms. Fuller of the library board to look at the building. They say it's perfect. They could, they've already can see stages, lighting, they can see outfitting it for those purposes. Um, this is, would be a shared space, uh, and, and primarily for use, you know, day-to-day by, by seniors. Uh, but absolutely, we want to allow it to be used, I mean, economically, uh, using it for children's plays and things of that nature, bring people to Hampton. Uh, so obviously, I, I, you know, I'm looking at that aspect as well. Um, the community gardens, we, we, we've got to purchase the, the lot next door, but we could add, you know, 50 parking spots, have plenty of room left over to increase the part, there is a park there, uh, in honor of the, of Mrs. Fortson, uh, that Mr. Fortson wanted to be there forever, uh, and it will be. Sheriff McBrier and the Fortson Foundation actually spend money maintaining that park. Uh, we would assist with that, freeing up maybe a little, uh, capital for them, and, uh, I'd like to get community gardens involved to have a, they're, they are a great foundation. They're a great organization, and, and, uh, I'd love to have them have a garden, you know, on the west side of the county.
Yes, sir. District Four.
Just got a comment to go through, sir.
Sure.
You mentioned that Hampton was willing to staff it, you were willing to pay the utilities, you were gonna purchase the property. Uh, that's more than any other city stepped up to plate to do.
Yes, sir.
Stockbridge doesn't have a senior citizen center. And, uh, to be quite honest with you, I've never supported it in Stockbridge, and that's my district, to, to, to my detriment or to whatever it is, because, you know, at, at the time, there was one in the fifth district that I felt like was close enough for our people to get to, and we've got transportation services to get to. I just wanted to clear up, just for the record, that, that the City of Hampton is gonna pay this, to staff the senior center, and I like your idea. I mean, the idea that, from Locust Grove's idea, that, it, that's a event center where the seniors occupy, I wanna say the first floor, but I, they could occupy the second floor and use, but it's used for other things, so, I mean, I applaud Hampton for what you're doing, cause that makes a lot of sense, because you can use it for more activities than just the seniors. I just wanted to be sure for the record that, what I'm hearing, that you guys are gonna do that. There again, that's more than any other city has offered or stepped up to do, and, and that is our problem, staffing is our problem. We can't, you know, we, we, we have these continual conversations about raises and other things that we try to do, and, and, uh, you know, we, obviously, in these economic times, it's, it's, it's very tough to even make that, make that move, so I just, you know, I appreciate what you're saying. I just wanted to clear for, you know, just for the record, what you guys are offering, so.
Yes, yes, so for those of us that live this every day, um, we understand the, the budgetary problem that, especially with the operations and maintenance of buildings. Um, for the act, for, for most citizens, all, what they know is that they have been told they were getting a building for a long time, and what the city is willing to do at this point, because it, it doesn't seem that that's going to take place, we're not gonna give up on it, and we're not gonna give up on, on SPOST, uh, uh, doing some great things in District Two. Uh, so don't get me wrong with that, cause we will be back for other things, but as far as this funding mechanism goes, this would be a fantastic start to a, a collaboration between CDBG program, county, city, the different organizations that can use this building, providing some services to the city, to, to the citizens of District Two, who frankly have been told they were getting these services for a very long time. Um, yes, we are willing, uh, we, now, we're not, I'm not adding a, a position, a full-time position to the city's roster. Uh, we will look at part-time help, we will look at, we will absolutely be instrumental in helping staff, but yes, we, we, we are committed to, uh, to, to helping with staffing this, this, this building, absolutely.
Thank you.
And, um, there's something else you mentioned, I forget what I was gonna say, but.
Y'all, 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 y'all's letter that you sent out, you know, to, to us commissioners to kind of let us know y'all, the City of Hampton's position, I thought it was interesting, and I thought it was very forward-looking. He said, "By eliminating the need for the land owned by the county at the North Forty Park," that's the land we were gonna use for a senior center, i- i- you know, it's, y'all go on and say, "Originally intended for a senior activity center to be owned and operated by Henry County. We would suggest building football soccer fields for use by Henry County residents with funds from SPOST Four on this property." So I thought that was very forward-looking, that this was, this was not just looking at this as a temporary solution, this was getting us a, the, the community center we've always wanted, but then also adding even more quality of life features to the county.
Absolutely, and, and you've, you've, you've gotta make it attractive for, for a lot of people. I mean, you, you don't want, you, you, no matter what decision I make or y'all make, you're gonna make somebody happy, you're probably gonna make somebody mad as well. Um, that's just day-to-day life for me. Um, the county attorney and I worked together on securing the property at the North Forty, had to actually sue the FDIC, if I remember correctly, to get access, to get ownership of that property. The City of Hampton had to promise water and sewer taps to a developer for, uh, they wanted forever, we weren't gonna do that, but we gave them 10 years. If they develop the property, they get free water and sewer taps. That was part of the deal that we, we worked out to gain that ownership of that property. That's when we were under the impression that a senior slash activity center would be built on the property. Um, I think it's 12, 13 acres, um, so plenty of room for baseball, football, so, or we've got baseball fields at North Forty, but football, soccer is really growing. It's, our newly-elected mayor said on the campaign trail, he really heard a lot about wanting football fields in, in that area. Um, and again, this is District Two, I'm speaking of, not City of Hampton specifically. Um, that would free up that land. Now, you know, what my hope is, is that we have so much participation at this building that, you know, we outgrow it. I, I mean, honestly, we, 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 we want to provide a place, and right now, it looks like that's the best option we've got. It's already an existing building, um, and after taking a tour of it, it actually looks like it would work out just fine. Um, we would treat it, we wouldn't have an industrial kitchen, we, we would probably treat it like I believe Locust Grove does and have meals sent in, but, um, the, that's part of the win-win, win-win, win-win I was, I was mentioning. Uh, it could free up that for, uh, development of some, some more fields, uh, whether or not that'll happen this SPOST, who knows, but, uh, but it certainly makes it an option.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
How many square feet is that building?
Oh, gosh. 5,700.
5,700.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, answer so quick.
I'm glad you could, cause I could not.
It is 5,700.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to know.
Yeah. It, it's a good building.
Anybody else have any questions? Uh, I'll ask Michael to come back up.
Sir.
Uh, we have narrowed it down to two projects. Apparently neither one of them are shovel-ready, so to speak.
Right.
So, if we wanted to, it would not be practical to make a decision on either one tonight. Uh, if we go to 30-day deal, do we have to have another public hearing for the purpose of taking input? Do, do we have to have another public hearing on these two issues?
We would. What we would do is, we would advertise it for 30 days to allow citizens, we'd put it in our legal organ, on our websites, what we did in the previous one, make sure it's advertised for 30 days, and then at that point, allow, take comments in during that period, and then come back to the board for consideration, if it's the board's desire, to consider just those two or that, or, or this one organization, this one program. Um, just, we're looking at dates, if we can advertise it by April 12th, um, and maybe look to bring it back to the board on the May 21st BOC meeting, that, um, that evening meeting, for consideration.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, Michael, I wanna ask, is the drop dead on when the project has to be started is, is when? How far out?
And, Shannon, come on up. It's, what we're bound by, and we try to get into some of the weeds on this in our, in our detailed summary, is, it's, it's two things. One is to be able to show that we're actually moving, making progress, uh, reasonable, um, reasonable progress, um, as we have a annual caper that's done. At that point, they're asking for, you know, the reporting period is July 1 through June 30th, and that's where we're looking to see, you know, how many subcontract agreements we have agreed and signed, and, and signed off on, and, and executed.
So you have to move forward by July 1st, or is, is that the date that, that I'm asking for? What's, what date do you have to have progress being made?
If we wanna have this, board's desire to have this on for the 2012, part of the 2012 allocations, which is the allocation we're in right now, then we would need to have it by June 15th, so we can get the subcontract agreements executed, so we can get record of it by the June 30th reporting date.
So, so by my calculation, that's about 75 approximate days. Um, I, I put the city manager on the spot, in 75 days, could y'all put this $50,000 to use?
We're moving forward this project, with or without this $50,000. This $50,000 would be a very good faith, uh, uh, gift from the CDBG program and the county commissioners.
The, the reason I ask is that public hearings, been there, done that with these community block grants, it's difficult, because, I mean, everybody comes out of the woodwork when they hear that there's money. It sounds like we have a very viable project.
Right.
But I don't want us to go astray and not be able to implement that money by the deadline that, that this, to be 2012.
Right.
If I can get some commitment by the city manager, we could move forward in the next 75 days and, and keep it whole for 2012, I would make, be willing to make the motion that we don't do the public hearings, we go ahead and move forward.
Well, either way, if we're gonna move forward, we still, because this would be an amendment to our annual, to our current annual action plan, so we would have to do the 30-day notification period. Again, the other option is, we could.
So we have to have a public hearing?
That's correct. We have to advertise for 30 days. But the other option is.
I'd suggest having it around 1:00 AM.
Um, you know, we can, when we say roll this money back into the 2013 allocation, that's a, that's a very real option. What we're bound by, you know, again, we're trying to, we're trying to make our annual report look as strong as possible, hence, whilst we're trying to meet these, these June 30th deadlines. The criteria that HUD uses is, I think you see in the, in the, in the detailed summary, the 1.5, what they'll look at is, what we have to have in places by April of 2014, next year, we will have to have to have spent, expended 1.5 of our current year's allocation, or the two years' allocation. Right. 1.5. So by April of 2014, we will have had to have spent 1.275 million dollars. Now, that would account for both the 850 we currently have allocated, as well as the 2013 850. They look at it in two-year increments.
I, I, I guess my only concern, Michael, is that, you know, the budget started off at 850. 250,000 was allocated towards District Two in Hampton. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand was allocated towards District Two in Hampton. The final budget had zero allocated specifically for projects in District Two. So if we throw this into 2013's budget, we send 50,000 to Hampton, it doesn't, you see what I'm saying? It kind of muddies the water. And I know that, I've talked to Andy, he has other projects that they would like to move forward, and I don't want to short-change them off of some very valid concerns that we had when we were doing this grant. I was trying to figure out how we could earmark this as part of the 2012.
Sure.
Yeah, we would certainly rather it be part of Project Year 12, because as you say, we will apply for some, totally separate issue, but with 13. To get 12's money in 13 would look like we're getting two doses of 13, which would not appear fair.
Right. So I guess we're doing the public hearing, no matter...
I would suggest that we take staff's recommendation and hold a second thirty-day citizen participation period in the public hearing to discuss the two remaining viable options, since neither one of them is table, I mean, shovel-ready, would be McIntosh Trail, City of Stockbridge, and also the multi-use facility in Hampton. Yes, sir?
My next question, Mike. First of all, I disagree a little bit with the commissioner's question in that it was never allocated, it was put in there, and then, but the board turned that $250,000 down. But I don't think it was ever quite allocated for it and then jerked away because it was never given. Start with, it was put in there on a preliminary, but what I'd like to...
That's correct.
Yes, sir, thank you. What I'd like to know is, and I don't know the answer to this one, but the other cities, what the other cities get from the CBG plan? Did Stockbridge get any monies? And if they did, how much, do you know?
They haven't made, Stockbridge hasn't, I think they're in the process of now making an application for some infrastructure work. There was some money that was set aside specifically for infrastructure improvements, and they have begun the process of applying for...
They submitted a proposal.
Submitted a proposal for that.
Do you know how much that is?
I think they're asking for the full $100,000.
So the City of Stockbridge is at 400, and then the City of Hampton's at zero?
100.
100.
Stockbridge, and the City of Locust Grove also was allocated $60,000 for elevator...
Yeah, then, I'm not finished yet, thank you. The City of McDonough?
They have not submitted any applications to date.
And Locust Grove?
$60,000 was allocated to the City of Locust Grove for elevator improvements, handicap accessibility.
And that elevator improvement, where was that at?
At the City Hall.
City Hall, okay. I was just, I was curious because it, the way it was presented, whether it was meant to be or not, was that the board gave Hampton $250,000, turned around and took it away from them, and that's not true. The board never approved the two, the first round that we went through.
That's correct.
As a matter of fact, I think more of the thing was, it was $250,000 to go into a fund, and then we were looking at borrowing the money to build a senior center, of which we had no money and nothing else to staff it. So I think we need to be very clear on what that was talking about. So at this point, you know, I mean, obviously, the City of Hampton needs to have, you know, they need to come to the table too. And I think what's happening is, is the chair is gonna put this out now for public, and I think that's a good idea. I'm not trying to slight the City of Hampton, not one bit. I just want to, that's why I want to know what the other cities had applied for and what they've done. So, anyway, I wanted to set that record because the appearance was not what actually happened. Thank you.
I don't find a suggestive resolution.
I do have one additional thing. How many cities had money that was on the preliminary form taken away from them?
I'm not sure if you mean by taken away from...
How many were removed from the preliminary list? There was money on the preliminary list for cities, and how much went to zero? How many cities were removed?
The reference to Hampton, there was no, at the time, I think, when staff, at the final vote, staff presented three options. One of those options included 250,000 allocation for the City of Hampton.
And then the other thing, who, which city had the highest poverty level for the entire county?
City of Hampton.
And doesn't that help with the qualification for this community block grant?
Yes, certainly one of the criteria, one of the national objectives, is that it has to serve low to moderate income citizens within, CDB funds have to be allocated within low to moderate income areas.
Thank you. And if I may, part of the city, I think part of the reason that the 250 was originally suggested was because, again, when the county learned that it would be a county of entitlement would get this funding, the City of Hampton in District Two was told that this would be the funding mechanism to build a senior center because SPOS couldn't do it. So, again, maybe, maybe that was a little preliminary of a promise, not knowing exactly how this funding mechanism would work, now that we do know...
Promised by who, sir?
The then-commissioner and then-financial director.
Just for the record, this was never promised by the board.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to be sure that...
Yes, yes, yes. Typically, when I speak about that, I speak about our representatives. You're exactly right, it was not promised by the board as the senior center for SPOS Three was. But again, our involvement with CDBG has been a little skewed from the get-go. This is a sort of a very minor allotment of money compared to what was sort of promised by, not the full board and CDBG, but in past SPOS conversations. And I don't mean to intermingle the two, but we understand that politically, they probably should be...
Chairman, if it's the board's desire for staff to go ahead and advertise for the thirty days and have the public comment period begin after this for thirty days?
I think what we're waiting on is a motion for somebody to move in that direction from the board.
If we don't have any additional options, also move...
If you don't have what now?
Because according to staff, that's the only option, is the thirty day, correct?
Yes. That's what I'm saying. That's why I asked that. Okay. We have a motion, District Two, to take staff's recommendation for holding a second thirty-day citizen participation period in a public hearing to discuss the two remaining viable options. One is McIntosh Trail and the City of Stockbridge multiplex facility, and the multi-use facility in the City of Hampton. Do I hear second? Hear a second? Do we have a second from District One? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. I'm showing six and zero affirmative. Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, we have District Four, SPOS Four committee appointment. A yield of four to District Four.
Yes, sir. I'd already, as a matter of fact, he's already attended one of the meetings prior to being able to do this, but in that Johnny Basler lives on Kellytown Road, which is right in the area, in that particular area, I recommend that we place Johnny Basler on the SPOS planning committee for District Four.
We have a motion from District Four. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. I'm showing six and zero affirmative. Next, we're going to discuss the resolution request and approval of intergovernmental agreement. Terry McMichels is in the loop on this, and Terry, would you be kind enough to share this with us?
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. This morning, we're bringing a intergovernmental agreement to you between Henry County and the City of McDonough for a joint intersection improvement project for McDonough Parkway and Phillips Drive and 81. This agreement will kind of formulate the partnership between the county and the city in the intersection improvement at Phillips Drive and 81, which this project has been designed, right-of-way's been acquired, project's been let, we have not awarded it yet. This mechanism will provide the funding that will go to do that project, as well as identify, I guess you would say, collaboration between the city and the county on another project, being McDonough Parkway and State Route 81, which is just about 1,000 feet west of there. So this project started out as McDonough Parkway, and then involved the Phillips Drive intersection, and then after a lot of history, I guess it, to save the board some time, some history, we evolved with the Phillips Drive portion being done first, and at such time funding can be secured, we'll proceed with the McDonough Parkway section. Just a few highlights in this, the county is putting 460, 70,000 dollars, I think it might even say 474, in funding, and we've already bought right-of-way and done the design, and I think that totals somewhere around 160. So we'll have about 642,000 or so in the project. McDonough will complete the rest of the funding with 300,000 of their SPOS money and some grant money they secured from GDOT in the total of 600,000. That's pretty much it. It will include realigning Phillips Drive to, I believe that's Autumn Lakes subdivision, or Autumn Lakes Road across, and signalize that intersection as well. So we'll improve Phillips Drive, get it in more at a 90-degree angle, and then add some lanes and signalize the intersection. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution to authorize the, this project and the funds that was laid out, the funds are available, and it does, I don't see where it authorizes. Okay, the resolution itself is the agreement. Does somebody move to accept the resolution as published?
Yes, I need to approve the resolution for Highway 81.
We have a motion from District One. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second from District Three?
Tarnish.
I'm sorry.
Sir, the resolution authorizes the chairman to execute the intergovernmental agreement that's attached to the resolution along with the two exhibits, or the three exhibits.
There's two resolutions?
There's one resolution, and there is attached to the resolution, the nine-page intergovernmental agreement with the three exhibits. And if you look at the resolve clause within your resolution, it says that the board will authorize the chairman to execute the intergovernmental agreement. That's attached.
Okay, so his motion will still be intact?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to clarify what you all were asking, what you actually were approving. It will give you the authority to execute.
Roger that. We have a duly, motion on the floor, we have a duly second. Any further discussions? No further discussion, all in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. I'm showing six and zero, Madam Clerk, affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and Board.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes of January the 15th, 2013, regular meeting, January the 28th, 2013, call meeting, and February the 5th, 2013, regular meeting. Somebody move to approve these minutes.
Please.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second, we have a motion from District Four, second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Six and zero. Public comments, we will hear, I have two. One is Mr. Bill Tony. Then you have five minutes when you're ready, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Tony, 1652 Highway 155 North, McDonough. I'd like to kind of clarify some stuff from the last meeting, that we talked about getting the raises for the police department. I do not represent the police department, I represent the citizens. I am the citizen of the county. That was my opinion. Mr. Bowman, we had talked about raises, you told me to find the money. Well, that's what I did. I went out to find the money. I didn't come for a debate, I didn't come for anything as a concerned citizen. That's what I came for. Since then, you know, I've given, I've given a lot of thought to what we got into, and it was kind of getting away from the point of what the need was. The need was, we needed to get the raises for the police department, but also, we do need raises for everybody else. You know, I've been in medical situations where I had the fire department, the paramedics and everything else, they came to my rescue. You know, I mean, even in my church, I fell out one Sunday morning, and they were there on the spot. I was in a motorcycle, excuse me, motorcycle accident, they were there. Everybody's important. I was asked a question, find the money. I felt like with the research that I did, I found the money, or I found a way to get the money. And that's exactly what I presented to y'all. I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for a squabble or anything else. And the police department has nothing to do with me being here. I am here as a citizen, as a taxpaying citizen, to see if we can't get these guys some money. Now, everybody's important. We're in tough times, everybody's important, and I want to express that, that everybody's important to me, you know. But this is one way that I found that we could find the money. I'd like to, I'd like to thank Tommy for being so transparent, most everything that you said you would do, I see you're fighting for the citizens of the county. We got, we got a mess to straighten out, and I think you got some good guys here to do it, and I appreciate it. But I just wanted to let everybody know that, that I am, I'm speaking here for Bill Tony, not, I'm not representing the police department. I don't want any actions taken against anybody for an opinion or anything else. So with that being said, I thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Next, we have, Mr. Steve Cash, I'd like to talk about economic development. Mr. Cash?
Mr. Chairman, Board, I'm Steve Cash, I reside at 2,000 Flat Rock Road, Stockbridge, Georgia. I'm the executive director for the Henry Council for Quality Growth and staff, I appreciate everything y'all do. Everybody needs a raise, absolutely right. And I'm gonna tell you how everybody can get a raise. That's through economic growth, economic growth. And I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, I'm trying to lead a live horse, so we can go together in the future where we'll have an opportunity to afford pay raises, to ever employ, even hire new employees. And one way we can go about doing that, of course, is through fiber optics. The city with the fastest internet service in the nation isn't San Francisco, it's not Seattle, it's not even college-based Boston, it's Chattanooga, Tennessee, with a population of 167,000. In 1969, Walter Cronkite famously reported the Environmental Protection Agency news that Chattanooga, Tennessee, was the dirtiest city in America. My house, how Chattanooga has changed. Chattanooga changed by adding fiber optic 600 square miles, to 600 square miles of the city. And through this fiber optic, it provided one gig, one gigabyte of internet speed for A city official in Chattanooga said that they have an asset that they can build on that they can't do that anywhere else. They also said about five megabytes of internet speed is 200 times faster than the national Official also said it's like having electricity 10 to 15 years before any other community has electricity. Businesses have relocated or located, small to large businesses have located from Ireland to California, and so far, these businesses have invested more than $400 million... and so far, these businesses have invested more than four hundred million dollars. They also had added, in Chattanooga, six thousand jobs. And on another fact, eighty-eight percent of the citizens in Chattanooga supported this at the start. So, I want us to take that and continue on, and have dialogue about it, and see if we can go in that direction. Like I said before, I understand that a certain company will put this in for us. All we have to do is say yes, and use it, and grow, and build. Economic development will be the foundation for where we go from here. I, I have a analysis, a permanent analysis. It will show, indicate where single-family permits were in two thousand and five and where they are today. Now, there is a, there is a slight uptick in single-family permits. You're starting to see houses being built in Henry County, but compared to before, it's nothing. I want you to look at commercial permits. Look at two thousand and seven on the third, third line, three hundred. This was at a time where Henry County converted to a new, new method of calculating commercial building permits, and as you go down from three hundred to two thousand and eight, three fifty-four, and down here from now, two thousand and twelve, there was a hundred and thirty-nine building permits issued for commercial businesses. I'm not gonna go into the rest of it, I want you to look at it, but I want to encourage you that anything that comes through here, and everything that comes through here, that can, you can encourage commercial growth on, please consider it. Please look at it a first, second, and third time, because this is gonna be the answer. Residential housing's not gonna be the answer. Commercial building's gonna be the answer. So, again, I respectfully ask, anything you consider, consider it to be economic growth, and we could build on that foundation from there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now's the time for the chairman or commissioners to have any comments, that they will start at my left. District Four?
I have an announcement to make. District Four is having a town hall meeting on park improvements in the Kellytown area on Tuesday, April the ninth, at seven to nine PM. We'll have a few refreshments there for those that don't get a chance to get home, get a bite to eat. We're gonna have some preliminary plans, some other things for some park improvements, on some capital funding that we have left in a couple of our other capital projects for District Four. That's, again, Tuesday night, April the ninth, Kelly Presbyterian Church on Airline Road. It will be on our website, it's probably already on our website, but it'll be on our, it's on our website, so please look it up, get the information off of that, and please attend. Your input is extremely important for this, for this particular park area. It's extremely important, we're looking at a passive park, so we really need to have a great amount of participation from the community and neighbors. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. District One?
Yes, I'd like to invite everybody to my first town hall meeting. We'll be in Locust Grove at, April the thirteenth, at nine AM, at Ten Cleveland Street, at the Parks and Rec Building. I'm gonna have Representative Andy Welch, and Representative Brian Strickland, and also a gentleman from GDOT will be there and talk about Highway forty-two and Locust Road, the intersection there that we really do need to improve on. But anyway, you're all welcome to come, I appreciate it.
Okay, the chairman has no comments. District Three?
Well, I'd like to start off saying, there's been a lot of talk about salaries, and this, that, and the other, and I am very happy to, to know that we're gonna recognize all our county employees with a five, ten-year, and a fifteen-year program, and that's, that means a lot to the employees. I think, I think help's coming. You know, hopefully we get through this budget process, and we can find some monies to make some pay adjustments, but everybody pretty much knows where we are in this room, and there's not a person in this room that doesn't wanna do something for the employees. And I just wanna take this opportunity to thank our employees for what y'all do.
District Two, do you have any comment?
I just wanna thank Steve Cash for coming out and talking about economic development. You know, I know we've had some dialogue, I've sent some emails to the other commissioners, 'cause this is one of my passions, one of the reasons I ran for this position, and just kind of piggybacking on the fiber optic discussion, I run a small business, I have six employees, and we have bandwidth issues, and I'm in the City of McDonough. I mean, and that, that's ridiculous, when a small company like mine has upload speed problems, when we're trying to attract businesses that can bring two hundred, three hundred, maybe even a thousand jobs. How in the world are we gonna attract them when we can't even cater to the needs of a, of a firm of six people? The other thing is education. My own daughter uses schoolology.com to do her homework, that's where students are moving towards, is more web-based solutions. We even had some problems in the school system, when one of the schools tried to stream the president's inauguration, we didn't have the capacity to do it. Wireless opportunities, you know, this is not just about what you plug into your computer, your cell phones, your iPads. LTE technology is changing the world right now. That is tied into putting a cell tower on top of a, a fiber optic connection, that's what enables those wireless connections. So, I hope that, I know we're pushing, and I've received very positive response from many of the commissioners up here. I think that we're gonna try to make that dream come to life, and that's gonna be a good day for Henry County.
Thank you. District Five, do you have any comment?
I just wanna echo everything Brian said. Fiber is gonna be very important to our future. I know there are people, people out there that are naysayers, but, you know, as a county, we have to, we, we need to know that we're not competing with the folks in Henry County, we're not competing to get with the folks in Atlanta, we're, we're competing globally, and if we, if we don't make this move, then we're gonna be left behind in the, in this century. So, Brian, thank you for your comments, and hopefully we can get this done soon.
Thank you. County manager, do you have any comments?
No, sir. No comments.
County attorney, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Upcoming meetings? Tuesday, April the sixteenth, six thirty PM, a regular board meeting. Tuesday, May the seventh, nine AM, and Tuesday, May the twenty-first, at six thirty PM, a regular board meeting. There's no executive session. Does somebody move, we adjourn?
No movement.
We have a motion, District Five, second District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.